Well, good evening. Welcome to the City of Bellevue Regular City Council Meeting for January 24th, 2022. Uh, City Clerk, could you please do the roll call?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House?
Here.
Councilmember Markstale?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Yeah.
Councilmember Robertson?
Here.
Councilmember Stokes?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmembers on?
Here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robertson, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Certainly, please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to this flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which is Sam, which is fans, one nation, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, uh, this month is National Human Trafficking Prevention Month, and our, uh, police have done a long time, very good job in the fight against human trafficking. And tonight we'll like to have Deputy Mayor read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Just let me pull that up correctly. Whereas, human trafficking is a modern day form of slavery and founded in the United States most often in the form of sexual exploitation, forced labor, involuntary servitude, and debt bondage. And whereas, this terrible crime which denies human dignity and freedom and fuels organized crime exists in our nation and in our own community. And whereas, even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to go unreported due to its isolating nature and lack of awareness. And whereas, increased community education on how to identify victims along with increased knowledge of local resources and services for those impacted can help restore freedom and dignity to identified survivors as well as prevent future victims. And whereas, the Bellevue Police Department partners with regional agencies to target online human and sex trafficking rings, and the city will continue in its efforts to fight illicit activity. And whereas, victims and survivors are encouraged to call the national hotline at 888-373-7888 or visit lawtraffickinghelp.org. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim January 2022 as National Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And I encourage all members of our community to learn more about this problem, to be vigilant, and report suspicious activity, and to work towards solutions to end the scourge of human trafficking in all its forms throughout the region. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, uh, Councilmembers on may be aware of the campaign called the "You Are Not Alone" campaign, which I know our city manager is going to be bringing back to us soon. But I was wondering, Councilmembers on, if you could give us a quick synopsis of this campaign?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to bring this up. So there is a national initiative created by the Business Ending Slavery and Trafficking called the Not Alone Anti-Human Trafficking Campaign. And the goal is to provide victims and survivors of human trafficking ways to get help and services. There are posters in multiple languages with information to the national hotline and other ways that victims can feel like they are not alone and can find ways to connect to the very people and services that can help them. And it is a real issue, and our police have done a lot of work in our local area to combat and help victims of human trafficking. So as the mayor said, I've been speaking with the city manager about ways that we can look into this effort because it isn't just the month of January that we need to be vigilant about, um, human trafficking. It's a year-round endeavor to, um, help the survivors and the victims. So thank you very much, and I look forward to, uh, more work in Bellevue related to this topic. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Uh, City Clerk, uh, no, excuse me, Deputy Mayor, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There are five, uh, pre-registered speakers this evening for oral communications. And what's that all called? The first speaker, which is Leslie Geller. Ms. Geller, can you hear me?
I can.
Perfect. Your time begins now.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Leslie Geller. My address is 15102 Southeast 43rd Street in East Gate. As you can probably hear, I have a sore throat, uh, due to a COVID infection. So my, um, speaking time tonight is really brief. I submitted my official comments in an email to the council this afternoon. But just of my comments is that I am asking not council allocate budget in 2022 to more fully fund staffing and programs so that Bellevue has a shot at meeting its environmental stewardship plan calls. Budget and staffing recommendations were presented by representatives from People for Climate Action at prior council meetings, and I would support those recommendations. And with that, I'm signing off. Thanks for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ms. Geller. The next speaker on the list is Barbara Braun. Ms. Braun, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, and city leaders for the opportunity to speak. My name is Barbara Braun, and I live at 13609 Southeast 43rd Place in Bellevue. The residents of Bellevue greatly appreciate the city's efforts to advance the 2020 Environmental Stewardship Plan. We applaud the inclusion of climate environment and environment in the city's stated top priorities and in the city's stated actions in support of the 2022 state legislative agenda. That said, it is clear we are not on pace with our investments to implement our ESP, and we are not on pace to reach the city's community-wide greenhouse gas reduction commitment of 50% by 2030. Bellevue residents continue to call for an immediate increase in funding for the ESP starting now in 2022 to begin to build the necessary city staff and capacity required to create the programs needed to implement the plan. We request the city immediately fund and fill three additional permanent ESP staff positions as suggested by People for Climate Action. It will take years to implement carbon reduction actions. The entire world agrees we must invest now. Every locality and jurisdiction must participate. And this is exactly in line with the city's stated priorities and plans. Meeting our 2030 ESP goals is not optional, but rather a moral imperative. Please be creative and find a way to staff up the ESP in the first half of 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Braun. The next speaker on the list is Chris Marks. Ms. Marks, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Thank you, Charmaine, and thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, and city leaders for the opportunity to speak to you tonight on the subject of adding staff to the environmental stewardship implementation. My name is Chris Marks. I live at 1805 102nd Place Southeast in Bellevue. My perspective, as you might guess, comes from two decades of working within the school district. First with 14 years on the school board and now as a trustee with the Bellevue Schools Foundation. Over that time, I have watched education systems work to become more relevant to kids' lives, designing curriculum and coursework to help students understand the larger world and encourage them to develop knowledge and skills to be problem solvers. The world is not a mystery for students today. They know about issues like homelessness and globalization and migration, and they know about climate change. They are really well-informed. And the more knowledgeable youth become, the more they understand the details of how we got here. Once they seize the size of the problem and the heavy lift of the solutions, they understand that they're looking squarely at government to play the critical role. Another topic they're actually pretty well-versed in. Inside and outside the classroom, kids today are absorbing climate change, understanding the warmth of oceans, the permanent plastic waste, the species die-off, the meaning of greenhouse gas emissions. When they look for answers, they learn that Bellevue, as a member of K4C, has a set of goals to cut those greenhouse gas emissions 50% by 2030. The Environmental Stewardship Initiative has created the beginnings of a plan, and the current staff has done remarkable work, and the results are on a clear data dashboard. But the goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions 50% by 2030 cannot be met without departmental increases that will bring our staffing capacity in line with comparable cities that are attempting these same goals. Anyone paying attention can see that the stated commendable goal is not achievable without more staff. There are many adults paying attention, and I think you've heard from lots of them over time. But my message to you tonight is that our youth are paying attention too. We are all proud of the Bellevue schools and the students it supports and the citizens it develops. You all must remember that they know the problems they're inheriting, and I hope you can show them that they can also believe that good government as a problem-solving partner is possible, and they should expect it for their entire lives because they saw it at work here. Let them witness good government stepping up to adequately address this growing crisis that they are all too aware of. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Marks. The next speaker on the list is Dick Thompson. Mr. Thompson, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Perfect. Your time begins now.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. I am Dick Thompson, 3115103rd Avenue Northeast. This past couple of weeks, I have watched and listened to public hearings and executive sessions for various bills before the state legislature. I have written and submitted testimony. I was very impressed to see and hear testimony in numerous meetings by both mayors and council members for six cities and a representative from the Washington Association of Cities, of which Bellevue is a member. Almost all testified, as I did, against these bills because they took away local control from the cities. I wondered, where was Bellevue? Why aren't they testifying? I clearly remembered that Bellevue had stated in their 2022 state legislative agenda, "Bellevue strongly urges the legislature to honor local decision-making authority and refrain from preempting the authority of the city elected officials who are closest to the people they serve." If you strongly urged, then why didn't you testify? If for no other reason, that would have let Bellevue citizens know that the legislative agenda really is an outline for action. Now, I realize that public testimony is not the only way that the city can engage with the state legislature, and it is possible, the things are going on right now that I am not aware of. Sadly, neither Bellevue nor any other east-side city has a newspaper to keep them informed. What the city does or does not do is important to us, and I would think it is very important to you that we know what is happening. Please find a way to communicate timely and frequently and begin with this legislative agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. The final speaker on the list this evening is Christian Dorset. Mr. Dorset, I do not see you connected by name. If you're connected by phone, can you use star nine to raise your hand so I can identify you on the list? Okay, Mayor, I don't see any hands for Mr. Dorset. So at this point, I would, uh, ask if there is anyone else connected to this call who would like to make communication to the council this evening. Please use the raise hand function or star nine if connected with a phone. Okay, Mayor, I do not see any additional hands that closes the oral communications.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next up, we have a report from the city manager, Mr. Miyake.
Um, Mayor, no reports this evening on the city manager's report.
Sorry about that. Okay.
Sorry.
Um, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So we have a public hearing tonight. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce that?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Um, the public hearing scheduled for this evening is related to releasing public utility easements located at 10300 Northeast 8th Street, which has been declared surplus. Uh, joining us this evening is Ira McDaniel, Assistant Director in the Finance and Asset Management, Management, um, Department to provide a brief staffing report before opening up the public hearing. Following the public hearing, council will be asked to take up consideration of the proposed ordinance that is included in your agenda packet this evening. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ira. Ira?
Thank you, Mr. Miyake, and good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight's staff report is regarding a request to release a public utility easement and a portion of a second public utility easement that are both located at 10, 10300 Northeast 8th Street. Tonight's public hearing is to allow the public an opportunity to comment on the proposed releases. The easements are located on the property shown here in purple, which is just north of Northeast 8th Street and west of Bellevue Way. This property is being redeveloped, and as a part of the permitting process, the owners requested that the city release existing easements on their property. The city reserves these two public utility easements in street vacation ordinances that were passed in 1958. The areas, uh, the areas are shown in light blue for the full release, and that's for, uh, ordinance number 270. And then there's the darker blue area, um, which is where the partial release for the easement listed under ordinance number 277 is located. Since these easements were created through a street vacation ordinance, we're proposing to amend their ordinances to remove the portions of the easements that lie within the Avenue Bellevue property. The public access easement would remain in place to the north of the Avenue Bellevue property. Uh, I do want to point out that we have received an objection to the proposed easement release from an adjoining neighbor. They objected on three points, and the first two are related to the contents of the city's public notice. We've responded that we feel that the notice was sufficient. Uh, their third point was related to a PSE vault which was relocated from the Avenue Bellevue property onto their property, which lies immediately to the north of the development. Their objection states that the vault's location impacts their future development plans, and I believe that representatives for both properties are signed up to speak during the hearing tonight to provide additional information. So with that, I'll, uh, turn it back to council to hold the public hearing, and following the public hearing, staff will request council action on the proposed ordinance, authorizing the amendment of ordinances 270 and 277 to release the public utility easements from the subject property. This ends our staff report, and, uh, will be available for any questions you may have following the public hearing.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, uh, is there anybody signed up, uh, City Clerk?
Yes, thank you. There are two speakers signed up this evening for this public hearing, but before I call their names, I want to indicate to everyone that there were two written comments received based on the public notice provided. Those written comments are in your desk packet for the public hearing this evening. And with that, I will call the first speaker, which is Victor Sung. And, Mr. Sung, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Your time begins now.
Thank you, Mayor and City Councilmembers, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Victor Sung, and I represent the owners of the real property known as the Multicimal Building located on 10223 Northeast 10th Street in Bellevue. Um, the previous, I guess, slides for showing, um, the easement to be vacated in question, specifically 277 is of concern to the property owners. And the main reason being, we are still in a, uh, legal dispute, um, with the property neighbor, who is Fortress that is building the Avenue Bellevue Buildings, the towers. The dispute is over a PSE vault that was relocated to our property, potentially, um, affecting our future development for that lot. And we are currently finding solutions to resolve this by relocating the vault, but by vacating the easement, the utility easement, that prevents us, um, from doing so. So we would like to object to this, um, vacating the easement for this utility, if possible.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sung. And the next speaker on the list is Chris Brain. Mr. Brain, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, perfect. Your time begins now.
Thank you. And thank you for spending the time, uh, council, and hearing our response. That'll be very brief. I've not heard anything from the owners of the property that Mr. Sung has, uh, represented since February of 2021. And, uh, there is no current and has not been a legal matter between the two parties regarding this easement in that entire period of time. Having said that, this is an issue between PSE and the property owner. There are many locations around that property, including to the north along 10th, Northeast 10th, where a vault could be relocated. We attempted to work with, uh, Mr. Sung's, uh, property owner in relocation of the vault, but it is a matter that PSE needs to do. I want to correct one statement that was made later by Mr. Tolleson, paragraph three, where he indicates that the approvals for the Fortress project included the vault located in a garage on that project. That is simply not true. No approval had the vault being located within the garage facility. And indeed, uh, there was a discussion at one point in time in late 2020 where Fortress had a discussion with PSE about that possibility, and PSE indicated that it would not consider locating the vault on the Fortress Garage because of access and public safety issues. So that is not a possibility. We submit that the relocation of the vault is something that should be considered by the property owner at the time that that property is redeveloped. Because until you know what the specific development is going to be, you don't know where the best location or access point would be. And so our position is that this vacation is appropriate. It is not an issue, uh, that really should impact Fortress or that property owner. And as a practical matter, uh, if you're aware, the Fortress project is now several stories in the air, and, uh, the cannot be located on that property for all practical purpose. So again, this is an issue between PSE property owner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brain. And this reaches the end of our preregistered list for the public hearing. I would ask at this time if there is anyone else connected to this meeting who would like to make a comment during this public hearing. Please use the raise hand function or star nine if you're connected with a phone. Okay, Mayor, I do not see any additional hands.
Okay, thank you. So, um, we can take questions and comments from the council. Oh, um, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we can, I'll take questions or comments if you like, but I wonder if the council will indulge me in allowing me to suggest that we hold off taking action on this tonight, and ask that staff look into the PSE vault issue and return at a later council meeting, sooner than later, with the ordinance releasing the easements if appropriate, and an update on this, um, vault matter with PSE. So that is my recommendation. Are there any comments or questions? I see Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks. Um, I agree with, um, your proposal, Mayor. I just wanted to put a couple of questions to the staff that they can bring back at that time. So, um, I'd like to know more information about the vault, which property it serves, if one, two, both, more than that. Um, whether it could be located on the property line itself if it serves both, both properties. And, uh, I think that's probably it, those two questions. Um, I, I think more information about that's really important, so, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, not seeing any. Um, I suggest, uh, that we delay this until we get more information, as I propose. Can I get a head nod that that's okay with you all? And we'll take, make a decision then. All right, thank you. So we'll move on to our study session items. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce those?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Councilmember. Um, we have three topics on your study session agenda this evening. The to, uh, first topic is an informational update on the 2122 Human Services Needs Report. Tonight, council will have an opportunity to ask questions, provide comments, um, during the presentation. By way of background, the city's human services staff publishes the Human Services Needs Update every two years. Um, this particular document represents an extensive data gathering process, including phone and online surveys, focus groups, and interviews to din, to identify the key human service needs of the Bellevue residents. This topic, it's last in front of, um, the council in April of '21, where staff reported on the development of the needs update. Joining us this evening is Michael Shiasaki, the director, as well as Tony Asparza, Assistant Director, Kristi Stangland, Human Services Planner, all three from the Parks and Community Services Department. Um, they will be joined by Ben Piper, the Chair of the Human Services Commission. Um, with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Michael to begin presentation. Michael?
Thank you, City Manager Miyake. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House, and members of the City Council. I'm Michael Shiasaki, and, uh, our purpose tonight is to pro, provide the council with an overview of the findings in the 202122 Human Services Needs Update. Tonight, I'm joined by Tony Asparza, one of our assistant, uh, assistants directors, Kristi Stangland, uh, our Human Services Planner, and Ben Piper, the Chair of the Human Services Commission. In tonight's report, you'll hear detail about the extensive quantitative and qualitative data gathering and analysis efforts that contribute to this report, including surveys in various forms, community conversations, and interviews with providers and clients. Cumulatively, this, uh, data provides us with an updated understanding of the human services needs that exist in our community. The needs update is guided by the Human Services Division staff and the Human Services Commission. Mr. Ben Piper, the Human Services Commission Chair, will describe how the commission was involved in this report. I'll turn it over to you, Chair Piper.
Thank you, Mr. Shiasaki, and good evening, Mayor Robinson and Councilmembers. The Human Services Commission oversaw the planning and development of the needs update as they typically do every two years. With our upcoming funding cycle beginning in about two months, the commission will use the information from the needs update to help us as we review requests for funding. Excuse me. Last application process, we received over $7 million in requests for the 4.59 million in funds we had to allocate. Therefore, our funding recommendations, which we will bring to you in the fall, need to be based on data and input from the community about what is needed to help improve the quality of their lives. The needs update shows our city, our, our growth as a city and increasing diversity of our population across both culture and means. This highlights the need to bring in voices of diverse culture and diverse means into our conversations and decisions. We need to continue to reach out and cultivate these voices so that they can educate us about the needs they are experiencing, excuse me, and share what they can contribute to the community. As part of the city's ongoing efforts to continue growing as a culturally competent and racially equitable organization and city, we have, when possible, highlighted racial disparities throughout this report. In addition to the data and analysis included in the report, the commission also valued the opportunity to spend a year delving into these topics. The commission hosted panels on immigrants and refugees, Bellevue School District students and families, older adults, the LGBT+ community, transportation options, East King County shelters serving people experiencing homelessness, and a presentation from King County Coalition Against Hate and Bias. We appreciate the time and effort the Human Services team put into this report and the foundation that it provides for our work on the commission, especially but not limited to funding decisions. On behalf of the entire Human Services Commission, I want to thank the council for your ongoing commitment to human services funding and continued strong support for human services in Bellevue. During the pandemic, the council has provided over $11 million in extra human services funding. This additional funding has allowed many Bellevue residents to retain some stability during this very uncertain time. Kristi Stangland will now provide you with a brief history of human services by sharing the key findings from the needs update. Christie, over to you.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Piper. Our presentation tonight, next slide, please. Our presentation tonight is information only to share the findings of our Human Services Needs Update. This slide provides the agenda for tonight's presentation. I will provide background on the Human Services and the Human Services Commission, discuss our regional approach, and then provide an overview of the needs update, discussing the key findings and next steps. In 1986, the Bellevue City Council adopted human services policies and guidelines. Resolution number 4815 established the city's role in human services as a planner, facilitator, and funder. Per this resolution, in instances where the city desires to direct cause a human service to be provided, the city is to do so through the provisions of funding to an existing qualified and quality service provider in the community as a first response. The role of the Human Services Commission, based on the City Code 3.61, is to advise the city council on all manners that are all matters that concern human services, planning, and funding. Some of the commission's specific duties include reviewing all requests for funding of human services, developing recommendations on priorities for allocations of city resources to meet identified needs, pursuing regional collaboration in planning, funding, and delivering of human services, reviewing and making comments on city actions which may affect the ability of human services in the city, and conducting studies and making recommendations to the city council in areas of human services. The human services staff in East King County suburban cities collaborate to identify and address the changing needs in our community, as well as prioritize funding services across regional boundaries to maximize resources and services. To ensure collaboration across East King County Human Services Commissions, we host joint commission meetings. This includes trainings and shared learnings to align whenever possible. Our human services staff also work to ensure that the east side voice is included in consideration for regional planning, such as contributing data and input to the subregional planning being developed by King County Regional Homelessness Authority. Bellevue has been a leader in developing the Human Services Needs Assessment and has maintained a biennial report since 1989. The reason for this is simple. In order to represent the human services needs for all our residents to those making decisions both at the city and the county level, we have found that it is critical to have accurate and comprehensive data that includes the community voice from throughout the city. In addition to guiding funding, the needs update helps the staff and other groups to make decisions to ensure that Bellevue's residents have the help they need to enjoy a high quality of life. Bellevue's Human Services Needs Assessment is also used by the entire community. It is used by human services providers, community groups, and those involved in regional planning. For this report, we gather both qualitative and quantitative data in a variety of ways. A statistically valid phone and online survey was conducted by Come Engage Us. Nearly 40 Bellevue residents participated in the community survey. In this survey, questions were added around if there was a change in the household's income. If so, was it a result of the pandemic? If the household is currently behind on rent, and if so, how many months? And if the household reported discrimination, they were asked what type or types of discrimination the household experienced. The data was analyzed by Come Engage Us, and they provide us with a comprehensive report of the data. We also held nearly 30 community conversations and key informal interviews, as well as conducted a survey with both our providers and consumers of human services. We prioritized inclusion of the marginalized voice throughout the report. Although we saw an increase in the majority of the areas noted in the full report, I will be discussing the areas that significantly increased or shifted need during this presentation tonight. We noted that predominant needs in the 2020 Human Services Needs Update. These areas of needs remain as community priorities were also supported with data in this report. During the presentation, I will be providing some key data points to demonstrate the significant increases or shifts in the needs in these areas. These themes emerged through all areas of need, as we heard from our community and collected data. During the presentation, I'll provide additional data points for these new and emerging themes. The pandemic has highlighted that health, social, and economic equity is still not a reality. COVID-19 has disproportionately impacted communities of color, putting them more at risk of getting sick and dying from COVID-19. Pre-pandemic safety nets were eliminated, which means post-pandemic, the slightest unexpected expense could plunge a household into homelessness, meaning vulnerable households will be living in an unstable situation for quite some time. COVID-19 guidelines led to social isolation for many individuals in our community, especially older adults and people with disability. Human services providers face capacity challenge even without a global pandemic. However, COVID-19 has caused not only a tremendous increase in the service need, but has also required a significant adjustment to how services are delivered. Both of these have stretched organizations already limited resources. In addition, agencies are reporting an increase in cost and a decrease in revenue. Lack of affordable housing is a significant concern. When individuals can't afford to live in Bellevue, social systems start to strain and crumble. Affordable housing is a top community problem in the survey and the most prominent theme during community conversations. The need for affordable housing has been well documented and covered in great detail in the city's Affordable Housing Strategy Report, which the council adopted in June of 2017. As the city invests in its Affordable Action Plan, human services funding amplifies these investments by providing services that both prevent people from entering homelessness and also provide services that help individuals maintain their housing stability, such as rent assistance, behavioral health, case management, and basic needs. A living wage is directly connected to the ability to keep up with increasing housing costs. Concerns about the cost of living in Bellevue was also a predominant theme across community conversations, with many expressing that people can't reasonably afford to live here anymore. Many providers stated that they're experiencing staffing shortage due to their inability to pay a competitive wage. They reported that with the cost of living so high in East King County, it has added an extra challenge to maintaining staff, since many can't afford to live within a reasonable distance of their work. Another barrier for families with children is affordable quality childcare, which is critical so that families can work and provide for their family. Many families struggled to find accessible, affordable childcare during the pandemic. The need for low-barrier emergency shelter for all populations continues to grow in East King County, as you can see from the data on this slide. East King County has low-barrier shelters that provide services for each of the populations: single men, single women, families with children, and youth and young adults. The shelters are often either close to capacity or overcapacity. When a shelter is overcapacity, they provide local resources, as well as refer individuals to shelters in either Seattle or South King County, forcing Bellevue residents to leave their city of residence in order to access resources. Preventing households from losing their housing is an important strategy for ending homelessness. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, Washington State enabled an eviction moratorium that ended in October 31st of 2021. Several housing stability programs are operating, including funding offered by Citi of Bellevue, such as the CDBGCV funding and the ARPA funding. However, most experts still predict a tsunami of evictions. Behavioral health needs in our community outweigh the capacity of our providers. And providers are reporting waiting lists for services ranging from three to six months. There is also a significant increase in the need for behavioral health services for children and youth, including higher rates of youth suicidal ideation and attempts. The pandemic further intensified the strain on young people's mental health and well-being, as well as the youth mental health system. In community conversations, one provider stated, "We have seen an increase in the need for counseling, especially for BIPOC counseling and substance use disorder counseling. We have lost a couple of people to suicide in the last few months due to mental health, so this needs to be addressed." Bellevue has the lowest rate of drug and alcohol-related deaths, a lower rate of drug and alcohol-related deaths than the state as a whole. In East King County, there were 60 confirmed drug and alcohol-related deaths in 2020. And in January 2021 through October 2021, there were 45 confirmed drug and alcohol deaths in East King County. Survivors of domestic violence are faced with barriers of housing and legal services. The high cost of housing in Bellevue creates a serious challenge for survivors who want to remain in the community to maintain their job and support system. The rise in domestic violence was reported by several providers stating that people have been isolated due to COVID-19, which has led to increased stress for many households. This stress has resulted in more clients reporting domestic violence to providers. However, domestic violence incidents often go underreported to police. The number reported to the Bellevue Police Department remains similar to 2020 and previous years. Despite the individual and collective effort of our region's human services providers, there remains substantial challenge to ensure that all members of Bellevue's diverse and growing community have the resources they need to thrive. The need for more culturally and linguistically responsive human services continue to grow as East King County becomes more diverse. And in addition to providing translated information, there is a need for more diverse staff who are not only bilingual, but also culturally competent. Many providers discuss the need for behavioral health services to be offered in individuals' primary language and by somebody that understands the culture, since this is often a stigma in accessing services. Racial and ethnic discrimination is a rising concern in our community. Both racial and ethnic discrimination and other types of discrimination in our community, or is, I'm sorry, both racial and ethnic discrimination and other types of discrimination is a community issue discussed in the majority of community conversations. It was also brought up by several providers in our provider survey. The number of hate and bias incidents, which include but are not limited to race and ethnic hate and hate crimes and bias incidents, have also increased, both in the reports gathered by the Bellevue Police Department and through reports gathered by King County Coalition Against Hate and Bias, which is a community-led initiative to address hate and bias incidents by strengthening and networking communities who experience racist and bickering treatment and all forms of oppression. Prior to the upcoming grant review process, the Human Services Commission will participate in a training to further develop their equity analysis skills and to aid them in applying that analysis to their funding processes, decisions, and relationships with human service organizations. This is the third funding cycle that the commission will participate in this type of training. Although transportation is not defined, or is not by definition a human service, it is shown up consistently as a biggest barrier to accessing human services, maintaining employment, and allowing people to remain involved in the community, avoiding isolation. The population most significantly affected are older adults who can no longer drive, low-income people who work odd shifts or can't afford public transportation, people with disabilities that don't qualify for access ban but do have trouble taking the bus, and youth who need to get to jobs or services. The commission will continue to discuss the implications of this report and the services that are critical to fund for the community. The data from this report will be used throughout the human services funding process as they determine funding recommendation. Agencies will begin to apply to us in March. And after the applications are due in April, the commission will read and thoroughly consider each application, which is usually totals over 100 applications. The commission will use the data from this report and the knowledge gained through the equity training to inform funding recommendations. The commission will provide their recommendations for funding to the council in fall of 2022. In closing, I want to thank the Bellevue City Council for the ongoing commitment to human services funding over the years and through the pandemic. As needs identified in this report, the funding allocations by the council ensure that services are available in the community, that sustain the human services safety net, and allow every resident to meet their full potential. We would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you for that great presentation. And Chair Piper, thank you for being here with us tonight. You said that we, the city allocated more than 11 million additional human service funds during the pandemic. And I want everybody to realize that when everybody was in lockdown, our Human Services Commission got together and started holding meetings and did an extra funding cycle just to make sure we could get those dollars out the door. So I am so proud of the work that you did. We all are. Thank you very much. So Deputy Mayor, as lays on to the Human Services Commission, I'll let you start first, and then we'll do Councilmember Barksdale, Robertson's, on Lee Stokes, and then myself. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, great presentation. Thank you, Michael, Tony, Christie, and Chair Piper for being here this evening. Important work and great presentation. Great in terms of it being very data-driven, but certainly as much work and great work that we did and continue to do as a commission, there's still lots of work to be done, obviously. So a couple of comments, a couple of questions. But again, just really want to emphasize the great work. And then also, you know, want to thank my colleagues now as well, because your comments today will help form some decisions later as well in terms of funding. So really appreciate taking the time to, you know, read the pack and become aware of a lot of these issues that, you know, some homelessness issues, you expect to be there, but we had more of these emerging trends as well that will continue and perhaps get worse depending upon how COVID-19 continues to impact our community and certainly impact in an equitable way. So lots of challenges ahead for sure. But incredible team that we have on the commission. So a couple of, I think, Christie, the question would go to you. On the domestic violence front, it's been well documented, the rates have increased during COVID. I was wondering if we can make the same connection to behavioral health as, it didn't really make a comparison to the prior study that we did. It just kind of gave the rate of 24% of respondents saying that they have experienced anxiety, stress, depression, perhaps suicidal thoughts, et cetera. How does that, how does that relate to the prior needs assessment that we did? Is that a significant increase, or is that about the same?
So I can say, based on our community conversations, there was a significant increase. It will take me a second just to look at the data, and I can get back to you. I have it right in front of me. I just have to flip to the right page.
Okay, okay. I'll move on to another comment while you're looking for that. But I anticipated that it was a significant jump, and I was curious what the percentage was there, but it's it's also interesting to me, and I think to my colleagues as well, how so many of these things are interconnected, right? I mean, if one cannot afford childcare, they may not be able to go to their job or find a job. They can't go to their job, they have no revenue source, they're not going to be able to pay their rent or pay their mortgage. So, and the amount of stress that can cause in terms of behavioral health, all these things are so interconnected. I appreciate the breakdown, but certainly I think we all need to think about how all of these are so connected, so tightly knit, and how we need to address all of them holistically, which I think as a commission, we try and do all the time. And Christie, do you have that number? It looks like you might.
Yeah, I do. So it was a 4% increase since the 2019, which was not a significantly significant increase. which was not a significantly significant increase. However, looking back at the data, so in twenty seventeen, only sixteen percent of people identified this. So it was an eight percent increase since twenty seventeen.
And then as it relates to COVID nineteen as well, we're talking about the inequities of BIPOC communities, for example, being more affected by COVID nineteen. How are we tracking that so that we are able to make adjustments there and hopefully have a different approach when it comes to healthcare and reaching out to communities of color? How are we learning during this process to making sure that we're documenting things so that, you know, heaven forbid, we ever have another, well, once we get past this one, we have another one. You know where I'm going with it, but we have a better approach in terms of communicating outreach and actually getting them the services or healthcare providers that they need.
Do you want to go ahead and respond to that, Christie?
I was gonna pass it on to Tony, but I can take a first shot at it. It's a lot easier when you're in person to kind of do the keys. Virtually. So with the COVID information, you know, a lot of the information is coming through public health and different King County resources, so it's not something we're necessarily tracking. However, we are tracking of working with our providers to determine the best way for resources to be shared, make sure that people are aware of what is available out in the community, both human services and health. Do you have additional things to add to that, Tony?
Yes, thank you Deputy Mayor for that great question. One thing I would note is at the end of the COVID nineteen chapter, it talks about the city's human services response, and you'll see evidence that's pervasive throughout our departments, that so many different departments in the city found ways to adapt and ensure that human services were able to reach our community. I can speak for our department and I'm sure for many others to say, these are new practices that we have adopted that won't go away. Once we have seen that these increase equity, these will continue to be practiced post-pandemic, whenever that may be.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. And again, thanks for the great presentation.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Thank you. Thanks for the awesome report and to the commission and to staff. I really appreciate the transparency around the methodology, control for race and ethnicity in the data collection and also just taking the mixed methods approach of the quote and call together to help get a fuller picture of what's happening in our community. I think to the Deputy Mayor's question, I think also having the conversation with or providing this to the Communities of Color Coordinating Team, I think that would be one place to engage and work closely with the BIPOC community. Given that we're going into the retreat at the end of March, I know that the Human Services Commission is going to come up with a list of recommendations. I'd be interested also in a prioritized list of needs. And I know that it's hard to prioritize what's most and what's least important. But just trying to get a sense of what, how we can consume this in the retreat as a way to start the conversation about, you know, funding. Because I imagine for the Human Services Commission, the money that is allocated to the agencies depended on what money is available. And I think us having that conversation can help maybe promote some additional funding, if you will, given the need. Quick question on the burden to agencies and in terms of reporting and such. Is there any discussion happening right now around coordinating with, in partnership with other east side cities, coordinating with Arch on data reporting requirements just so that, you know, we come up with a shared set of reporting requirements and then they can submit to Arch and we all get what we need versus having to report to each city? And maybe that's already in place and I'm just not aware, but just a question there. Great question, Councilmember Barksdale. Tony, do you have a quick answer on the Arch question?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Barksdale. We don't coordinate with Arch, but the cities do coordinate together. And so when agencies are funded, they do not have to individually send a report to each city. We work together on one application that we use. That's both for the application process and for reporting to try to cut down on that administrative work for agencies.
Got it. Awesome. Thank you. And then my last question, as you probably know what it is, are the data going to be available on the portal? On our data portal? Yes, I believe that information will be available on the portal. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Barksdale. I like the idea of talking about the priority, the human service needs and the funding priorities at the retreat. So that would be interesting to get information for that discussion. Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. Very interesting presentation. It's always very, I love to see all the data. I hate to see so many people struggling. So I'm going to focus on one specific area and that's behavioral health. I am very, very concerned about what is happening particularly with behavioral health for all people, but particularly with our youth. With the shutdowns and kids being out of school, out of sports, disaffected from their friends, they can't even sit and talk at lunch because they still have to be masked or far apart from each other. We have a absolute crisis on our hands with our youth. Fifty-one percent increase in girl suicides ages twelve to seventeen during the pandemic under the CDC. That's suicide attempts. I think I've seen numbers where it's over a hundred percent increase in suicide ideation among teen girls. We have a major problem and I think that we need to really focus on this. And I would like to see more funding going towards behavioral health for youth. We need to partner with the school district and with our other human services agencies. The school district is realizing the problem they have on their hands. They are doing a universal screening for mental health in the high schools in just a couple of weeks. I got a notice as a parent today that Newport High School is doing it the first week of February, and it's an opt-out. So every kid, unless they're opt-out, will be screened. That data would be incredibly helpful for the city to have so we can figure out where to use our money. I would also like to see some, and maybe this is a retreat topic, but we have fifteen ninety money, which is separate from a lot of the human services funding that we do. The fifteen ninety money is mainly used for capital or for funding operations at capital facilities. To that extent that we can then pull some, put more funding towards those needs from the fifteen ninety money, I would like to make sure that we then shift some of the general human services funding to other needs that can't be funded by fifteen ninety, like mental health for our youth. I just think it's really important. So I'm not going to talk about everything. I think it was great. And Deputy Mayor Noonhouse is absolutely right. So many of these things are together, like the teenage girls, their families are, you know, struggling economically. They, you know, are disaffected from their friends. They've been out of school. I mean, it's a whole cascade of effects. Maybe they're starting to use drugs and alcohol to self-medicate. So it's very interrelated, but we just cannot let the youth of Bellevue spiral. And with the, trying to get a therapist for these kids or for adults, there's months, if you can even find one, you have to get on a waitlist. It's months-long period. The inpatient beds are full. I mean, it's really hard. There's so much need right now. I see people looking for therapists. They can't find them. We have got to start funding these. I mean, we cannot let our kids fall through the cracks and right now they are spinning. So I'll just make my case for that and think about how we're going to shift the money. Fifteen ninety can pay for a lot of the capital operations of those. Let's think about really doing some more behavioral health services with the human services money. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. We will make sure that your comments are included as these recommendations move forward this fall. So thank you.
Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you, Michael, Christie, Tony and Ben. You know, I really appreciate this really thorough work of doing the outreach and centered on data. I think that's super important. You know, what I saw in here was a lot of information around how we work on prevention of homelessness, how we look at behavioral needs to prevent central no-involved overdose, looking at racial and ethnic discrimination. You know, I think that the health disparity and the likelihood of eviction, the fact that certain populations in our BIPOC community, two to three times higher of potential for eviction and health disparities related to COVID. Those are serious things that the data is telling us about the needs in our community and where we need to have more focus. I think the other one related to wraparound services and the coordinated transportation, I don't think we talk about that enough, that just because there are services, if we can't get people to the services, that can be the biggest barrier. So I was thinking about the fact that as we look at funding, the fact that it isn't one size fits all and that the needs are different and we need to be able to spend that time. I will say that I heard a lot of accolades related to the ARPA money. So specifically, I heard from Central Cultural Mexicano that the way that our ARPA funds were set up was really extremely helpful in meeting people who were facing eviction where they are. So as I think about moving forward, how we really look at the funding in a way that gives some latitude for the organizations to be able to meet the needs of the community where they are, instead of saying, we only pay for this, we don't pay for that. So I would encourage that continual broadening and flexibility of thinking because I think we don't even know what we don't know in terms of the safety nets that have been completely disrupted by COVID. I guess related to that, I would like Bellevue to think about for the service providers, right? How we really make sure that they're putting their oxygen mask on in order to help others? So the data in there that talks about how we retain higher and for the people working for those nonprofits that are supporting those services. So I would like us to also look at, how do we streamline our processes, our reporting so that they can spend more of their time supporting the very people they're trying to help versus all the pieces of paper that we might need to get from them in terms of the record-keeping and documentation? So that the capacity building side, so that they can be sustainable. I would love to see whether, when we look at our funding, that we're actually supporting living wages for the very people that are working in these organizations so they don't end up with such a rotating door of the staff working for the nonprofits. Where are the business partners that we might be able to draw on? I think we'd have lots of partnerships with our business community. Can we do even more matchmaking of those businesses that have certain areas of interest and where our needs are? And then looking at a sustainable source of funding so that I know that our eleven million was a one-time infusion of funds. But how do we look at it more broadly so that there is even more sources of funding? The fact that, what was it, almost twenty-five percent of the people that live in Bellevue make less than fifty thousand dollars a year? I'm trying to figure out how you'd even be able to rent anything for that amount of income. So I do think that this is an amazing document with over two hundred pages of information that really is foundational so that we can focus on the right areas. I guess my plea would be, let's really center on the very people that are providing the services because if they don't survive, then the very people we're trying to serve are not getting served adequately. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I always have the greatest admiration for Human Services Commission and our commission members. And thank you, Chairman Piper. You know, this is something that it's a thankless job. You never meet all the needs. We know the needs is out there and we can only take care of a small portion of it. And people who apply for it know that, you know, and so it's only the most desperate or the most somehow we are aware of, you know? And most of the time, we're only aware of a little bit of it. And we don't know what we don't know. So you know, needing services, they are, we're not, that's why we have nonprofits, private sectors. And we all work together so hard on it. And Human Services Commission, you guys work, you duck through everything and you spend the time, you make comparisons and you look at the needs and you get the staff information. Staff does all of great work because they have to do all the detail. They gotta get information in a way that you can understand, that we all can. So it's just continuing the most admirable, challenging commission and community work in the city. So thank you. And that's just endless. The challenge is, you know, which is, well, what I'm talking about is it's been magnified the last few years with the COVID nineteen pandemic. Because the impact, you know, has been same way mitigated. The economy is pretty decent and we somehow manage, you know, this and that. And it's not a widespread hit that we are all aware of. And also communication, technology, social network, it's so dominant now. We know immediately, wow, people are really getting hit. But the fact is, all the element that puts us into those positions have always been there. And it may sometimes get better, sometimes get worse, and we go through it all. And we are just trying to see how we can fix it. Oftentimes as well, we're putting on Band-Aid. Hey, hey, Band-Aid is better than nothing. We have to. And so in some cases, we do better than that. We actually make a difference. We actually do. And I think that's our hope and that's our challenge and that's our continuing diligence and our hope and aspiration to help people who need help. So I, you know, but I, well, we can, so all these conversations is very good because they give us the support, aspiration, inspiration. And all the data or the work that staff is doing, it's very good because we need to know them and that give us better information, make us smarter. And what we can do, we talk to people, we hear from the nonprofits. And we all have different ideas, you know? Everybody, everyone needs help. I mean, we should not be saying, well, we need to put more money on this and that. We need to help this better than that one. No, everybody who's affected needs help. You know, one person starving versus another person starving despite of what they are, who they are. It's the same starving. When somebody is going to die, it's going to die. And we cannot say, well, you can afford to die better. If you starve, it's okay. No, it isn't. But so it's a challenge. It's a challenge. So again, we have to work within all this challenge. So what I would want to do is, we have to figure out with the data, with the information, what is the most effective, what's the most beneficial, what we can do that makes the most difference? And that varies, you know? Today, senior citizens, we are the most important. We're having nineteen percent of the seniors, sixteen percent. We need help. Young people, we need help. But let's be realistic that we are a damaged credit country. We are smart. We have information. We talk about those things. So I think the retreat will be very good pace. And then we can at least have some intelligent discussion, expressing our opinion. And I heard many things talked about, and I agree, you know, it's again, personal, personal agreement. Theoretically, I'm old, I say, hey, senior citizens should be the first to get taken care of. Every one of us should have the benefit. But no. I heard, and we all, most of us agree, young people are the most important, the most needed because they are the future and they're most vulnerable if, you know, they don't have the other support. Supposedly, they have other support. They are more resilient, for example. So all these are balances we gotta do.
Councilmember Lee, we need to wrap this up.
Okay, I'll wrap it up. So two things. I don't want to pit one people in need against another people. We need to look at it holistically, realistically, and with good information, what's relevant that we can do. One, two, what's important is, I heard in the staff report, the staff actually recognized that. Uh, the staff actually recognized that. You know, we 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 have to have people to who are helping, uh, the the who are helping for the staff people. Have to have the culture to understand and to be the trusted messengers. And I think that's one area I've always been advocating. We are sure that, sure that. We need to have people.
Councilmember Lee, please wrap up.
All right, so, yes, you can tell, I'm, I have a lot to say, but this is what I have to say now. Thank you. Don't give me any time. All right, thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Stokes. Uh, I'm not seeing or hearing Councilmember Stokes, so.
Yes, that puts me, hold on a second. I checked it, but it it it's, it's a gremlin in there. Um, I do want to, you know, back to the Human Services Commission and express my appreciation for the work you do. And it is amazing, given all the challenges and and both in resources and other things. Uh, what I'd like, just leave a question with you to think about is. And and being here enough times to see over and over and over again how it goes, it it's um, it's always. Seems to me that we have built in kind of boundaries around our commissions and things sometimes. And it's and it's great to have the human services, uh, this report is always amazing. Um, and you have probably a, you know, like two hundred and fifty things on there and we maybe focus on fifty of them. Uh, the rest goes by. Um, so I would like you to think about and have this conversation from your perspective. Not from staff perspective or from council members' perspective. You as citizens, you are people, you know, who are working on this. What do you need from the city, from the council? To do a better job, to do more? And how can you, not just money, but other factors? I think that's an important thing to do. So I I would appreciate, you know, some focus on that. It's been an interesting conversation. Again, it's conversations we have every year and we say about the same. Everything is really good. Everybody's doing great work, which is not enough. Uh, and it's all kind of, we know, back and forth. And and I think it's, it's because we know there is a tremendous need and and. It's a human need. It's what we're supposed to be working on. And yet, we do great work, but it's it's only a small portion of what is going on out there. And, you know, we we ask questions or we say things that are, we know the answers to them. And it's just kind of, hey, we're doing really great shiny things. We're doing this. It's great. Everybody's working together. I, I, and and I I know the COVID's made a lot of difference, but it really is the same when you go back. We, it's nothing really increased, it increases in all because of a lot of things. But again, we know the problems, we know the reasons for the problems. And the issues that create them over time. I love data. It's great. We collect all this. How are we using it to give better outcomes is the question I have and something that's a challenge. You know, we have focus and resources and and increased action. Where is that coming from? How can we do that? How can we do better? And we keep talking about we have all this and and, you know, it's interesting with Councilmember Lee's. Basically, I mean, I've never heard a a kind of, you know, the last part, a a kind of a cry for universal. Healthcare, for universal work, everybody's, nobody's, you know, better than the others. And we can't point fingers at the CDC for this or that and get into all that thing. We have a great responsibility and the question we need to go forward on is. How do we really make a lot of different, real difference down the line? What do we need? And it's not all money. It's refocusing. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the relationship between the Human Services Commission and and the Parks. The Parks and Community Services Board, and that's another question about how do we, how can we make the organization kind of overlapping? How can we get that to work better? Uh, but that's another conversation. But really great work you're doing, both the commission and staff. Um, and I think we've done a good job with what we have, but we haven't done. Enough to get more or to to understand how to be more effective with what we have. And how do we get more? Because if we don't do it, people are going to die, as as. Councilmember Lee said, people are gonna be sick. And we, it's just frustrating that we're doing all these great things, but we aren't doing. We're just leaving so much left undone. So my challenge to everybody is this year, let's let's really focus on how do we. How do we really utilize the city's assets and the region's assets? And I appreciate the comment, again, the commission recognizes that regional, these are regional problems, not just, it's not just Bellevue. Uh, so I think we have a great opportunity ahead of us to, uh, with with all resources we're getting, with some different attitudes and better approaches from. The business community and other communities, um, more sense of we're all working together. Um, and we did a great job this year, but let's let's work, I'd like to see us really work together and do. Even more and come back next year and say, wow, we've made not just a ten percent difference, but we've made a fifty percent difference or something. So thank you very much for the work that's been done. It's just just amazing.
Thank you.
Let's do more. Thank you.
So, um, I think you know what I'm hearing from the council, Christie, is that, um, a lot of appreciation, of course. But also, it's really hard to tell if what we're spending on is making a difference in the people's lives who live here. And um, I think we all kind of want to know if we're making that dent or perhaps we're missing the mark in any way. And what can we do to uh be more impactful if we're not being impactful enough? So I don't know if that's in the data collection or in the reporting out, but it'd be really interesting. To pick a particular topic and just show what the impact of our funding has on. Uh, what it is we're trying to change. One thing I really appreciate is you talk a lot about the importance of childcare. And uh, the Greater Seattle Partners, when we were working on coming up with an economic development. Solution for the region in the midst of the pandemic. That was one of the top things that rose to, that they um believe would really make an impact in people's lives was access to affordable childcare. And so I'm really happy to see that being consistent in our city's plans as well. And um, on the mid, the Mental Illness Drug Dependency Oversight Commission that I'm on. We talk a lot about the cost of behavioral health. And how many providers have uh stopped working in this field? Because it's such a low pay for such a demanding job. And so there's a big push to pay people more, and I know that the county will be raising. Uh, people salaries who are in that field. I wonder how the city of Bellevue is responding to that challenge.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Robinson. Um, I think a couple of observations I would make. Um, in regards to a couple of the topics that you brought up were two very important topics. Um, the measuring the impact of the city's investment, which has been, is always generous. And over the pandemic has been very, very responsive to the needs of our community. Um, of of course, as the council, I know you take our responsibility very seriously and thus want to know the impact the dollars are making. I would suggest it might be a bit of a difficult time to do that right now, um, simply because of the impact of the pandemic. Um, that I do not know if you would be able to objectively measure. Um, the impact of the investments apart from the deepening needs created by the pandemic. It it could um skew the results um to try to assess that at this time. When the um impact of the pandemic has been that needs have arisen across um the entire human services continuum. And so we may not really at this moment be best suited to be able to see what has the long term impact. Of city investment of human services dollars been. It's definitely a question we will leave and contemplate. I would just raise that as an item that comes to mind when I, when I think about that a bit. Um, uh, we do have a upcoming conversation planned with the commission. Um, around what principles they will be considering as they consider um applications. And so that is actually scheduled for our next commission meeting. And so we had already been generating um a list uh for consideration by the commission, based on the data that came out of the needs update. And I've also been noting specific items that council members have raised here this evening, um, specifically for you, mayor, noting. Um, the impact and need for equitable pay for our providers. And so we will add that to the list for consideration by the commission, um, as they develop guiding principles for reviewing applications.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, there's a lot to do. I just, you know, we put thousands of dollars into rental assistance. And I, I mean, I should say millions of dollars into rental assistance. And we we uh helped thousands of families avoid eviction. So I know that it's really hard to report the, on the impact of those dollars. But I think it's safe to say that we, our city helped thousands of families stay in their homes during the pandemic. And we continue to do that. And that's, that's what we don't get to hear. That's what's kind of hard. But um, anyway, we really appreciate the emphasis on the needs, getting an update on that and a very good presentation tonight. Thank you. So it is uh seven twenty four. Um, why don't we take a ten minute break and come back at seven thirty five?
Would you like to introduce the next study session, please?
Let's see here.
Yeah, I'm here. I just had to unmute myself. Sorry about that.
Oh, I can't hear you, Mr. Miyake.
I can, I can hear you. Can you hear me now?
Maybe it's me. Oh, it's just.
Yeah, just our microphone on.
Okay, can everybody hear me? Okay.
I thought it was, I thought it was you. It was me. I didn't have my headphones on.
No worries, no worries. Um, Mayor and councilmembers, the second topic on your study session agenda this evening. Is a report and staff recommendation on the allocation of House Bill fifteen ninety funds. For affordable and supportive housing capital projects. Um, this evening, the staff is, staff are requesting direction from the council to return council at a future meeting. With legislation to approve uh the staff recommended capital funding allocations. And just by way of background, the criteria that was used to evaluate project submissions was approved by council. In July of twenty twenty one, prior to issuing the fall RFP calling for applications. So joining us this evening is Matt Cummins, Director, Elizabeth Direct, Senior Planner, as well as Elsa King. Um, who is from Arch, as well as Matt Cummins and Elizabeth are from um the Community Development Department. Um, with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mac uh to begin the presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Miyake. Um, and Mayor and Council, it's good to be back here with you this evening, talking about uh House Bill fifteen ninety. And some of the expenditures that we're bringing back to you tonight to consider. Um, I thought I might start this presentation by talking a little bit about the background. And and I was struck during your last conversation um around human services. And the relationship of human services and stability and housing. You all may recall that when we first set about House Bill fifteen ninety and thinking about the process. To look at how we might spend that one tenth of one cent sales tax. The council um talked very deliberately about wanting some quick wins and some some thoughts around what we might be able to do. As we were collecting the first year sales tax. We've done that in two ways. One, we issued an RFP for human services for a little over one point six million dollars. And you may recall you awarded those monies a few months ago. And this tonight is part two of that quick win strategy to award some capital money. Um, and we put out the RFP in the fall. And so what we're going to do this evening is walk through the process for that RFP, our recommendations on the funding allocations. And then we're going to talk a little bit about where we go from here. So I know a number of members of council and some folks in the community are going to want to talk about the twenty twenty two funding cycle. We're going to be back to talk to you all about that roughly the end of the first quarter. But what we are going to do is talk a little bit tonight about some lessons learned as we did the capital funding round and the human services funding round. And how those two things really do need to work together. And that'll be a little bit of a preview for what you're likely to see here towards the end of the first quarter. So if we could flip up uh the recommendation slide. Our recommendation this evening is for you to direct us to bring back an ordinance which would approve funding for um the Fall twenty one. Affordable and supportive housing capital funding. Um, that's based on the criteria that the council set out and that we put into the RFP. And then uh took in the submittals in the fall. Go to the next slide. Um, tonight, what we're going to do is walk through a little bit of the fifteen ninety background. It's also important uh to look back and note which um um color of money or requirements relate to fifteen ninety. Um, it's a fairly targeted set of populations are allowed to be served. Um, and there's some requirements, zero to sixty percent AMI particularly. Um, we'll talk about the RFP process uh and the specific priorities that council put in place. And then we'll talk about the the projects that came in and what our recommendations are. And then we'll finish up, as I mentioned, with looking forward uh to our next study session on the overall process. And talking about debt issuance potentially uh and how the council may want to look at spending the money, money going forward. So with that, I'm going to hand it off to Elizabeth Direct on our staff to walk through uh the funding recommendations for tonight.
Thank you, Mac, and good evening, everyone. As Mac said, I'm going to go through the background here and just give a little bit of a reminder of where we've been. So that we could start to go towards where we're going. So here's a timeline in front of you all that goes through all the different bits and pieces that Mac just mentioned. So back in fall of twenty twenty, council approved uh collecting the HB fifteen ninety funds. Um, and that started up for a collection of funds in twenty twenty one. So that um in spring of twenty twenty one, that human services RFP that Mac mentioned was released. And then you all approved the distribution of those funds in early August last year. Um, pretty immediately following that, we actually released the RFP for uh the the funds that we're discussing tonight. So that came about later that month. And we, uh, once, once that RFP was released, we held uh pre-application meetings with both city staff and art staff. For any people who were interested in applying for those funds. So they were able to set up meetings with us. Uh, following the closure of the RFP later that month, we then held a panel review process throughout October, November and December. Which then gave the staff recommendation that is going before you tonight. Uh, so here we are with the the yellow dot in January of twenty twenty two for the the recommendation of those capital funds. And uh, following direction today, staff can bring back legislation to distribute those funds. Um, as Mac mentioned, there are a few other efforts that that align with with what we're discussing tonight. So we do want to highlight that there will also be an Arts Trust Fund recommendation that will likely come back around February. And then late in Q one, there there will be an additional study session to continue the previous discussions that the council has had. On the future of HB fifteen ninety funds. So when Mac wraps us up today, he'll go through some of the lessons learned from this process. Which will feed into that discussion that'll take place in late Q one. So just a little bit of a reminder of the funds themselves. Um, as they were approved, as you might imagine, based on on the name, they were based on a legislation called HB fifteen ninety. And that legislation did allow us to collect a point one percent sales and use tax. Um, the anticipated amount that would be collected for twenty twenty one is about eight and a half million dollars. Um, that is still trickling in and we're currently at a little over six million, but it is anticipated to continue trickling in for the next few months. So um, we 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 should be close to that amount for twenty twenty one. So the the legislation that allowed us to set this up has pretty strict requirements for how the funds can be used. And so it sets up two buckets, as Mac mentioned. One of the buckets um cannot be more than forty percent of the money, and you'll see that on the on the bottom of this slide. And that's what um the human services RFP earlier on this year really targeted. And so that can be used for for um uh separate standalone services of a variety of types, as mentioned on the slide here. The rest of the funding has to be at least sixty percent of the the money that is collected. And that's what um applies to the RFP that we are discussing tonight. And that does have very specific requirements around populations. We'll go on over on the next slide. And it can be used for the construction or acquisition of projects, of capital projects. And for the operation and maintenance of those projects. And so the those projects can be affordable housing, they can be housing related services, they can be behavioral health related facilities, or it can be land for for any. they can be behavioral health-related facilities, or it can be land for, for any of those things. And then it can also be the operations and maintenance for any of those types of projects. So on this next slide, we wanted to highlight the specific populations that are eligible for this funding in that sixty percent or greater bucket. This is based on state legislation, and so it really has to be very specifically for these populations. It can be people with behavioral health disabilities, veterans, senior citizens, persons who are homeless or risk of being homeless, and specifically including families with children. It can be unaccompanied, homeless youth or youth adults or, or young adults. It can be persons with disabilities, or it can be domestic violence survivors. So those are very clearly laid out in the state legislation. In addition, all of, any of these populations that are served by these funds must be for households that are earning at or below sixty percent of the average median income, of the, of the annual median income.
Area.
Area median income. Thank you, Mayor. Truggling with that one today, the area median income. So based on that, we can go through a little bit of the RFP process and priorities that we, that we went through in order to highlight what the recommendation itself is. So this is just re-highlighting a few of the specific pieces Mac mentioned earlier. In this very first year, we, we wanted to hit the ground running. And so we did release that human services RFP in spring, and that resulted in one point six six million dollars that were distributed in August. The arts trust fund recommendations will also go before council later thi- this quarter. And there's definitely some, some kind of alliance between that, that process and this process. And so you'll hear a little bit about that as well as, as we describe the projects themselves. And then, as Mac mentioned, there is a parallel effort going on throughout this year to determine what future years will look like and, and how the, the future fifteen ninety funds will be utilized. And so that will be back before you all later this quarter. So we, we wanted to kind of remind the, the council and anyone listening in of some of the important criteria and priorities that were announced for, for this particular RFP. When staff was before council back in July of last year, there was an extensive criteria list that was discussed and that was attached to the packet tonight. There were also three really high priority areas where we, we were really instructed to highlight and really encourage in the RFP itself. So with that, I'm going to hand things over to Elsa Kings from Arch so that she can talk through a little bit more about how the, these priorities were, were included in the process as well as the recommendations themselves. So Elsa, take it away.
Thank you, Elizabeth, and good evening. Yes, Elizabeth highlighted earlier, Bellevue and arch staff worked closely to evaluate each proposal against council's previously discussed priorities. During the evaluation process, three main priorities were emphasized. Those were addressing and preventing homelessness, focusing on households at or below thirty percent of area median income, and residents who are vulnerable and underserved. These priorities were well-established in the RFP, and respondents were asked to provide proposals which clearly address these priorities. In regards to the process and the review, the review and analysis of the applications received was quite extensive. Arch performed the initial analysis and review of the applications. This analysis and the findings were then presented for discussion for further analysis to a review panel composed of staff from several city departments. These departments included the City Manager's Office, Communities Development, Human Services, and Development Services. We went through a matrix in which we evaluated the process, and staff was encouraged to discuss the projects and to provide feedback. In regards to our findings, we met four times during the, the process. In addition, there was quite an extensive coordination during the process with King County and the State Department of Commerce, as well as Arch Housing Trust. Based on our review and analysis, staff is recommending the LifeWire project for funding at this time. We are recommending funding the project in the amount for up to one point six million dollars. Staff believes that the project meets all of the previously mentioned fifteen ninety priorities. In addition, the project is a priority for King County, the state, and Arch, all of which are recommending this project for funding at this time. A little bit about the LifeWire project. So as previously mentioned, they, we, LifeWire initially asked for, requested two million dollars for, of funding. But upon review and as we went through the process, they were actually able to obtain additional funding from King County, which required them not to need the two million dollars. And that's the reason why we are only requesting one point six million to be approved for funding. The project itself is very exciting. It is the rehabilitation of a, a property in the east side of Bellevue for victims of domestic violence. It will create twenty-five affordable units. Most of the units will be at thirty percent AMI, which one was one of our priorities. And in addition, the project will have, will create a brand-new services building in which LifeWire will provide extensive services to the residents of this project. One important factor about this project that I think is, should be mentioned is that this allows, this project allows LifeWire to consolidate two of its existing programs into one to allow them to provide better services and a more livable facility for the residents. As mentioned, there will be onsite services provided. The services will be funded through separate sources. Another important component of this project that I would like to highlight is that this project, as Mac previously mentioned, it was very important for us to get units on the ground and up and running. And this project is expected to complete construction by two thousand and twenty-two, so by the end of this year. There were projects that applied that we are not recommending at this time. One of the projects was Imagine Housing, one hundred and thirty-second Avenue redevelopment and Dash's Evergreen Port and Glendale redevelopment. These projects were at the early stages of planning. And we feel that additional time and collaboration would be very beneficial to these projects. We feel like they're good projects. They will provide much-needed affordable housing. But they do have some, we're going to continue to work with them to establish some, some additional clarification. As mentioned, these projects earned the early feasibility stages and the project's commitment to the priority populations, and the priorities were not clearly defined. Although both projects identified a willingness to serve residents at thirty percent AMI, the amount of the commitment was unclear at this time due to the stage that the projects are in. And it is unclear, they were also unclear as to the services that would be provided and how those services would be funded. In addition, one of the differences that I would like to point out between these projects and the LifeWire projects is the timing of these projects. These projects that we are not currently recommending were our, our projects that are long-term projects that are not scheduled to begin construction for at least five to nine years, respectively, as opposed to the LifeWire project will be under construction in the next few months. And with that, I will go ahead and hand it over to Mac to, to continue the presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Elsa. So to sort of wrap this up here this evening, we learned quite a bit going through this process. And you may recall the last time we talked to council about the overall fifteen ninety program. There's a number of different variables to being successful in the providers and the developers being able to access these funds and then build and, and develop very successful projects. One of the things that we learned from the first year of the, the program and putting together the framework is that there's going to be tremendous amount of collaboration between a number of different entities to, to not just create housing, which we do through many other means, but to create stable housing. So in thinking about our continuum of care model and thinking about the most vulnerable populations in the city, we've learned quite a bit from our partners, both in the human services arena and in the very low-income housing arena around the need for a very close relationship between those two sets of services. So creating that housing and having it be stable by having access to the types of services that help people stay in stable housing. And you heard quite a bit during your human services presentation earlier about transportation and the lack of transportation that can then cause issues. So thinking about having onsite services that are necessary becomes a really, really important concept. So what we're working on now is how can we bring this back to council at the end of the first quarter and have that conversation so that we can set up the two thousand and twenty-two funding round? There are a number of developers and/or service providers that are now very aware of the program that we have here in Bellevue, and they were not last summer. It was really in its infancy. So as we have been reaching out to all of those people, they are very much waiting for us to be able to tell them how they can apply for this funding, you know, going forward in, into the new year. So I'm going to go ahead and stop there. Our recommendation for this evening is to award the LifeWire project. That's really the, the one thing we're asking for you to do here this evening. You would just give us direction to bring back an ordinance that authorizes the expenditure of those funds. So I'm going to go ahead and stop there, and, and staff's happy to take any questions the council may have on, on this.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to start us off and just say, you know, these two presentations, it's so hard to see all the need and to see this funding available and to, you know, be anxiously wanting to provide funding for these projects. But we're just beginning. It's a process, and I really appreciate the work we're doing. I'm excited to support LifeWire's project. It's exactly what we've talked about wanting to do as a city. And I'm really hopeful as we move forward that we can move faster on funding other projects. And I appreciate, I appreciate the outreach that you're doing because I can't, I don't think we could just sit here and hope that people apply to us. I think we really have to be out in the community, listening to what's out there, what's being contemplated, what the needs are, what the solutions are, and, and trying to figure out how we can plug in and help make this happen. So I appreciate that proactive support. You're exactly right about the value of onsite same-day services. That is the key to helping some of the people who are most difficult to help. So I appreciate the emphasis on that as well. So I will be supporting this tonight. Who else has questions or comments? Council members on, followed by Councilmember Stokes and the Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. I too support this project. I think it's, we need to move forward as quickly as we can. I appreciate hearing about the fact that builders and developers are now aware of this program so we can hopefully get more proposals in. You know, I had a belief since we voted on the fifteen ninety that if they build it, we want to support it, even looking at bonding against the future revenues to be able to have the funding available. So I understand that that pipeline is being built. We're creating the buzz and getting that going. I guess my question is this. We know that we're allowed to spend up to forty percent of the funds for behavioral health services and housing supportive services. So since we've already granted the one point six six million, how much more money can we actually spend on housing services and behavioral health? And would my colleagues be interested in taking the money that is available within the forty percent allowed and actually providing the behavioral health services that we've just been talking about in the previous presentation? So that's what I'd like to understand and what my, what is that bucket of money? And then whether my colleagues would have an interest in looking at that.
I can certainly answer the first question. You have taken in about six million dollars thus far. Remember that this tax is collected in the rear, so we're not done yet collecting two thousand and twenty-one tax. You will, assuming you authorized the LifeWire project this evening, you'll have three point three million or so that you have allocated. We would want to come back with, with hard math for you. Those are rough numbers because you've only authorized the expenditure of two, two different RFPs. We had planned to do that as part of a very large financial analysis, talking about where you want to take the program from here at the end of the first quarter, assuming that you would want to, of course, spend those monies going forward.
Mac, I think also, sorry, council members, I just wanted to say, I think when we first discussed the fifteen ninety money, we also considered giving anything we didn't spend in the year over to Arch. So that's another consideration, but you can go ahead with council members on's questions.
So yeah, we, we had planned to bring back any unspent monies for your decision-making as part of your next study session. And I think there'll be a variety of options for you all to consider at that time.
And, and when would that next study session be? And the reason I'm asking is because we know that we have that need today on the services side. And so if there's a way to bring that back sooner rather than later so we understand how much money we're talking about and what we might want to do. And certainly, this is a, a short-term view, knowing that we're going to have that longer-term discussion about how broadly the fifteen ninety money would be spent.
So we're targeting the end of the first quarter, which would be sometime in the next forty-five to sixty days. There are some, some fairly large questions we want to make sure we can answer for you, especially if you want to look at debt issuance on the capital side, which, which many entities that are, have exercised their rights under fifteen ninety. The idea is to create a pot of money to spend against for the capital because that's such a large expenditure. But we're still evaluating all that to bring it all back to you.
Okay. Well, thank you. I look forward to listening to the rest of my colleagues. Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes, followed by Deputy Mayor, Councilmember Robertson.
Yeah, I appreciate it very much. I think this is really, really good progress. And, you know, we, we never know when going forward, what the other, what's going to be out there. And it takes some time, and, and I think you handled it well in, in approaching that. And I support this, you know, the plans. I think it's great. I just want to have a question that for people who might not quite understand this, and I was just listening to it because we've, we've gone over this before. But when we were talking about some money left over and going to Arch, what, just refresh us on what that really means. It's not, this is not the whole pile of money we will have. And what's the difference in that and the money that's going forward in, into future years?
Councilmember Stokes, I, I think when the mayor was referencing those comments, you, you all may recall that when the conversation first came up, there were some questions around if there's any leftover monies, would the city be in a position to give them to King County, for example? And Arch came up, for example. And what staff commented on the time was, yes, that'll be a monetary decision that you can make, you know, any year-to-year with unencumbered funds. But you've not given any direction for any one particular entity, or even to potentially give it to another entity.
But this is, this is each year or, I mean, I've had some questions. Somebody asked me about this. They weren't quite understanding last time. And I, so we will have more than one point six million going forward, or two million, or whatever.
Absolutely. Yeah, we, we estimate that it will be somewhere between eight and nine million dollars a year as an ongoing revenue stream. The state law allows, in this case, the city, to issue debt against fifty percent of that revenue stream, should you choose to do that. And then all the same restrictions that we went through earlier apply in terms of the overall expenditures and how they add up to the overall percentages. So we are working on all those scenarios to bring back to you for discussion so that you can make those sorts of decisions. And then hopefully we can have a, a very standard process that everybody knows how to access because that's one of the most important things for the providers.
I appreciate that. I just wanted to put it in the framework so everybody, you know, that's what we're doing. Actually, putting it that way reminds us of the whole, the bigger picture of it. And we do have a lot to work with, which is, is, is exciting. And there's some flexibility. Okay, good. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, followed by Councilmember Robertson, and then Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor, and, you know, thank you to the whole team, staff presentation tonight. And thank you for maintaining your urgency around this. I, I think you heard us loud and clear that we wanted to move quickly with this fifteen ninety money, and I feel like you've delivered. This, this, is this a great project? As you highlighted, it's a priority for the state, the county, the city. It's people who very much are on the margins, you know, dealing you know, dealing with domestic violence situations. And, you know, if, if these folks don't get some kind of stable housing, we are, you know, literally preventing them becoming homeless in our city. And certainly we don't, don't want that. And so I, you know, I'm fully in support of this. It meets all the requirements. Couple of questions for, probably for you, Mac. You know, you were talking about the, kind of the communications, kind of getting the word out about 590 money, who's eligible, et cetera. Sounds like, you know, at this point, you know, some developers, may provider are, you know, are aware of 590 money now. But are they clear? Do we, my question, do we need even more outreach to make sure that we have more robust folks coming forward with the RFP process going forward in the future? Or do you feel at this point that those that are either eligible or have projects in mind are going to be ready this time around? I know with, with LifeWire, it was kind of a timing issue. It was new and they just happened to be the right, maybe, you know, the, the right project at the right time. So that's great. But don't want to miss any opportunities in the future either for other important projects. So I'm just curious if more outreach needs to be done there through the providers, through the developers at this point now to make sure we don't miss any other opportunities when we get that more money in, I'll let you respond.
Yeah, thank you for that question, deputy mayor. Yeah, I absolutely believe with another year under our belt of getting out and talking to those people, that there's much more awareness of the program. By last summer, the program had only been in, around for four or five months total. And we were just putting an RFP on the street for the first time. So I might turn it over to Elizabeth or Elsa to speak to the different types of providers and developers we talked to and what they said, you know, about wanting to participate going forward.
Thank you, Mac. I can add something if I may. I think when, as Mac mentioned, this is, this program is in its infancy. And with other programs that we see throughout the, the area, the region, it does take a few years for developers to understand that the program is available and it will be available consistently. And so developers plan their pipe, pipeline around that. Some of the developers that we saw this time around that did not apply, but were showed interest for some developers that were maybe doing larger developments that for one reason or another, were not able to obtain psych control at the time. And so those are developers that I think will see come back around or those type of developers, I think we'll see come back around. And as the program continues and moves forward, I really do believe developers will build a pipeline around, around the program.
Great, well, thanks, Elsa. Thanks back on that. So yeah, again, very supportive, the, the fact that we're going to have these 25 units up and running by the end of the year. Again, that's a quick, that's a quick win. And that, that is fantastic and look forward to more, hopefully, quick wins. We had that discussion, what, 45, 50 days? Matt, when he come back before us here before the end of Q1? So appreciate that work going forward. And yeah, great, great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Council member Robertson, followed by council member Lee.
Mayor, I, I didn't raise my hand at first because I just wanted to say what she said, after you spoke. I couldn't agree more. I'm really excited about this project. Glad to see it moving forward and funding it. Glad that they have more partners on board. So definitely the question on the table is, should they bring back an ordinance? Yes, you should. And then I just, listening to my colleagues talk, I wanted just to weigh in a little bit. I agree that the, setting up the infrastructure, the internal infrastructure to start these programs going to take some time. I know that we're going to be moving faster in the future. I'm wondering if we, as part of the discussion of when, in 50 days' time or whatever, when this comes back, if we can talk about maybe having some ongoing open, rather than doing RFPs every time and having it be one round, if we have it, we have continuous opening for applications, especially for smaller amounts. You know, we are, it's common and much more of the norm, particularly with Arch and what we've seen before, for us to be funding nonprofits for this kind of housing. But we have an awful lot of fee developers and profit housing being developed in Bellevue. And we have put things in place in our land use code in terms of incentives and in our other, in the city code, in terms of the multifamily tax exemption, to try to get that, those private developers to build more affordable housing. We could use the 1590 money to supplement those efforts. Because one of the things that makes affordable housing more successful is if it's dispersed, if it's dispersed across the city and if it's dispersed within developments. So it's much more successful to have developments, say it's 250 units, say you have 30 of, 30 of the 60% AMI, 50 of the 80, you know, another 50 of the 120 and the rest market rate. That is going to be a much more successful way to support the folks who need affordable housing than to have just a single block with 50 units of all 30% AMI, 60% AMI, whatever dispersed. And that, those are good too, particularly for the very, very low income. But for the 60% AMI, we can weave those into every apartment development that's going on right now. By, you know, buying down the affordability with some of this money, we could bring these units onboard even faster. So I think that that's something that we, I, you've heard me say this before. I'm going to say it again. I think that's something we should definitely consider as one of the many different ways to use these funds. It will allow us to distribute the money faster. It will allow us to bring units onboard, you know, at a quicker pace. And it will also reach the goal, which are affordable housing, the tag, Technical Advisory Committee recommended, which is dispersion, dispersion, dispersion. So that's, that's what I'd like to see there. With regard to bonding, I, I wouldn't support just floating bonds without a project in mind. I think if we have some big projects we want to do that bonding would benefit from, absolutely. But why pay interest on the money when, if we're not ready to, ready to use it? If we don't need the bonded funds yet? So I think that we definitely should keep that option and that tool on the table. But why pull, you know, if you're with your house, why pull your HELOC? If you're not ready to, you know, build your addition? So same kind of thing. So, because you're just paying interest for nothing. So on the behavioral health, just looking at my notes. On the behavioral health, I joined council members on with wanting to make sure that we do more of that. There's funds available and, and maybe it's not ripe yet. But for example, the Plymouth Housing, permanent supportive housing, if they need funding to make sure that they have services onsite, that's something I want to do. I mean, so there's a, if, if we can fund some of these counseling services, particularly youth counseling services that are nonprofits, so they can add more therapists and/or provide more beds or, you know, to help the youth, let's do that. I, whether it comes from 1590 money, from the general human services, from community development block grants, we need, we need more. And so I don't, you know, let's use the tools we have to fund more because behavioral health is critical. So I'll just stop there. I'm looking forward, I really appreciate the work that staff has done on this. It, it's, you have a council going, hurry up, hurry up, hurry up. You guys are doing amazing work and, and it's getting, we're going to get faster at this. And we're distributing the money. I love it. We're, we're ready to cut another check for another important project. And I, I love what Alyssa said about, or Elsa said about the pipeline, that people will know it's there and we'll, we'll get more streamlined. I love it. So thanks.
Thank you. Council member Lee.
Thank you.
Council member Brexel, would you like to comment after council member Lee? Okay. Council member Lee.
Okay, thanks. Yes, I support the recommendation the staff is making. LifeWire, that's a great project. And I commend the staff doing it very expeditiously. This is a great, great thing to do. We just discussed the human services, you know, report before this. And we talk about, you know, the needs out there. That's so horrendous and we're only meeting some of it. And to me, I think this HB 1590 is a source of funding for us to use to take care of all the human service needs, which include housing, which include the wraparound services, which include, you know, the, the, the mental health and all that aspect of it. And so I don't know whether we have talked about clearly in our mind. I think you have given us what the constraints are, requirements are. But I'm not sure if we discuss it in the framework of what specifically we should be funding, you know, on with this money. So I believe that we, we should, should do that because some of the questions that race, and I have that myself. We, you know, I think the director mentioned, Mac, we need to work with partners, making sure it's efficient. What needs are there, we can deliver them. And we, we have some questions we asked about Arch. I'm glad Arch is involved. And Arch is doing a lot of this stuff. They already have the pipeline. They, they already have done a lot with the housing services and all that stuff in place. So I think I kind of agree with council member Robertson's suggestion. And, you know, whatever money we have, whatever funding we've got, you know, one, we, we got to look at the opportunity to make, make a work for the city of Bellevue, fill our needs. It's all part of the overall human service needs. That also means I support council members on's recommendation. You know, if we can use the money, and I think we can, for the, the, the mental health, wraparound services, as council member Robertson mentioned, let's do it. We don't need to wait. We don't need to get an RFP. We don't need to figure out and have the city do all that stuff. And the city, that's the reason I think the city of Bellevue is working so wonderfully is because the city doesn't have to do all that. We have partners already established. We have nonprofits. We have Arch that's working on the regional basis, representing the city, but not directly the city. And we got things already know what needs to be done, what's on the pipeline, who we're going to work with. And so I, I really think that if, unless we have constraints, we cannot do that. I don't think that we need to make it more difficult, more complicated, more bureaucratic and more red, with more red tapes. We need to utilize what we got and then take advantage of them. And within the, the parameters. And, you know, I, I, I really feel that's very important. Even that, I, I know we only cover a small portion of the human service needs. We still have to look for other sources. You know, I think when we talk about this, we're continuing to do so following the human service discussion. We will have to figure out what other sources of money we can get. And this is a God same, HB 1590, it has given to us $9 million and continue to come. And so why don't we use it to meet our needs now we already have? So maybe Mac can give us a summary later and whether the city council need to talk about these things a little bit more clear, you know, more clearly and a little bit more specifically so that we know what is the best way to administer this money to meet the needs of the city. Thank you.
Any thoughts?
Sure, mayor. Yeah, you know, there've been a couple of comments here that relate to the, the same general overall program administration. And you're all going to have a chance to really get into the meat on the bones when we come back to you at your next conversation. But you have a tension between the need to create desperately needed housing in the lower income brackets and for these very specific populations and the need to increase human service and, and housing related service funding that helps those units that are created be stable. And it's very much the balancing and the teeter totter and how to go about doing that. And we're going to lay out some options for you all at your next meeting so you can make some policy choices. And then we can get going on administering the program and spending some of those funds.
Yeah, that's why I think you just council up some conversation, just making some directions and guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Lee. Council member Brexel.
Sorry, thank you. So I support staff's recommendation to fund LifeWire's Hope Starts Here program. And also glad to see that this is going to go toward housing that's at 30% or lower AMI. When we first took the funds, I was really interested in making sure that we continue to fund 0% to 30% housing. So look forward to that in the future as well. I also look forward to staff returning with the guidelines or policy options around balancing units and services. Because I do think we need, to Max's point, we do need a lot of units as well. But maybe in terms of unused funds, some of that can go to behavioral services because I understand there's the need there. I was just going to mention in terms of outreach, as you may know, Amazon has the $21 million grant for real estate developers of color who are building affordable housing. So just as another endpoint in terms of outreach, especially for developers of color, I'm curious if maybe that's some avenue for identifying additional developers who may, may be developing, and they'll be using these funds. And then last question, have we received the housing needs assessment? If not, is that, because I just, maybe we haven't, I just missed it. When is that coming? Is that, in other words, are we going to get that before the retreat?
I, I think to answer your question directly, we are building some of our housing needs assessments into some of the other strategic initiatives, like the major comprehensive plan update process. And that's largely driven by the countywide policies and our decision to grow just in a particular way, holistically and globally. But we will not have a housing needs assessment targeting certain number of units in the next few months.
Okay. And in the next, when that comes, it'll be, it'll include affordable house specifically?
Absolutely. So we're, as part of a totally separate work effort, we're looking at jobs, housing imbalance and what that means for the city overall and, and largely too on the missing middle, which is another big segment of, of housing that we're missing.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, so is there a motion, deputy mayor?
There is. I move to direct staff to prepare legislation for final action at a future meeting, approving up to $1.6 million in secured grant funds to LifeWire in support of Hope Starts Here.
Second.
Good.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, terrific. We have one more item here. We're going to, it's a regional issues. And Lacy Jean, I believe, is going to provide a, a quick overview for us. Are you ready, Lacy Jean?
I am, mayor. Good evening. Today, I believe we are about one quarter of the way through the 60 day short legislative session. And lots of interesting bills are coming through tonight. I'd love to take the opportunity to highlight a few for you. Of course, a more extensive report is included for you in your council meeting packet. Before I get into those bills to highlight, I also wanted to flag that we're approaching an important cutoff date. In order to advance, bills must be voted out of their policy committees by February 3rd. But still many, many bills yet to be discussed before that, before that cutoff date. So one of the city's top legislative priorities, as you know, is to secure funding to complete improvements along I-405 and to support the deployment of bus rapid transit. As I mentioned to you all last week, when we had Washington State Department of Transportation come give an update, Governor Jay Inslee's proposed supplemental transportation budget included full funding for the $450 million revenue gap on the I-405 SR167 corridor. And that is great news and a great way to start off the legislative session with that recommendation. Good news for Bellevue and many of the stakeholders along the corridor. As you know, though, that's just a starting point for discussion and it's up to legislators to take action. So to support them in that work, Mayor Robinson and council member Robertson testified to the House and Senate Transportation Committees, urging legislators to identify a funding solution this legislative session. So more to come on that. As you know, affordable housing is a priority for the city of Bellevue. And this has been a hot topic in the 2022 legislative session, including increasing density to support affordable housing. Unfortunately, several proposals have begun to come forward that would preempt local control and land use authority. So I want to flag a few of those for you. House Bill 1782 intends to increase the availability of land for missing middle housing within city limits. And that missing middle housing includes duplexes through six plexes, stacked flats, townhouses and courtyard apartments. Under this bill, cities must allow all missing middle housing types on residential lots located within half a mile of major transit stops and places additional requirements for other single family parcels based on the city's size. The Association of Washington Cities submitted a letter to the legislature and testified in opposition of this bill. pointing out that while many cities share the legislative goal of increasing affordable housing, that this might not be the most effective approach to take and um, might not um, honor the um, extensive uh, public input processes that many cities have gone about to um, figure out their individual approaches to affordable housing. Three different accessory dwelling unit bills have been heard. Um, in general, advocates for ADUs argue um, that a statewide mandate to remove all local ADU regulations would increase the housing, the supply of ADUs and create more housing affordability. Again, um, local governments uh, pushed back somewhat, highlighting the need for this, these decisions to be made locally and noting that many jurisdictions have removed local ADU regulations but have not seen an increase in the number of ADUs constructed. So more to come on these bills. One last area where I'd like to update you all is, has to do with social and criminal justice reform. As you know, Bellevue supports efforts to clarify the many reforms enacted in twenty twenty-one to provide greater implementation direction due to, to the complexities and nuances of police practices and to provide for consistent implementation across the state. So two of these bills to note are HB seventeen nineteen and HB seventeen thirty-five. HB seventeen nineteen clarifies that beanbags can be used as a de-escalation tactic. This bill received near unanimous support at its public hearing. And HB seventeen thirty-five expands the scenarios where physical force is, force is authorized, such as executing a court order, taking a minor into custody and behavioral health scenarios. At its public hearing, law enforcement, community members, nonprofit leaders and more expressed general support for the bill while identifying several areas for minor improvement. So consistent with Bellevue's support of greater clarity and consistent implementation, Bellevue submitted technical feedback on these bills and they both passed out of House Public Safety Committee on January twentieth. So that is a run-through of only a few of many bills under consideration and discussion at this time. And I will be back um, later to um, provide additional updates. And that concludes my report, Mayor. I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you, Lacy Jane. Any comments or questions? I'm not seeing anything, so I think you answered every question we had. And that brings us to the end of our meeting, so we will adjourn and I'll see everybody. Not next week because next week is a fifth Monday and we're not having a meeting next week, but the following Monday. All right, thank you. Good night.
Night.